Friends, good evening. I think we're getting ready to start, so I want to invite you to come in and find a seat. I'm so pleased that you all are here. My name is Rabbi Orin Hyon. I am delighted to be representing the clergy and the staff of this congregation to welcome you to our home for an evening of engaging and thoughtful exploration of a very important and timely milestone in the history of our nation. This evening's session is important to me and to us, not only because it is directly in line with the social and ethical mission of our congregation, but this work has been at the heart of our spiritual community for many, many years. When Brown was being heard by the Supreme Court, there were two American Jewish institutions that presented amicus briefs to the court, the American Jewish Committee and the Anti-Defamation League. As part of the remarks that those organizations made to the court, in addition to the arguments that they made about the Constitution and about the economic results of segregation and the ethical and moral implications of leading a nation forward into a segregated culture, into a segregated future, they made a couple of arguments that I want to share with you very briefly by way of introduction. In their Friend of the Court briefs, those two organizations, the ADL and the AJC, talked a bit about what it means for America's standing in the world of nations as a nation which perpetuates segregation. And they write in their brief, I'm quoting now, "The people of other lands listen to our voice of America, which quite properly extols the virtues of democracy, but our enemies seize eagerly upon the weaknesses of our democracy and for propaganda purposes magnify, exaggerate, and distort happenings in the United States. The press abroad," they write, "is constantly comparing our declarations and statements about democracy with our actual practices at home." And they go on to cite an editorial that was printed in an Austrian newspaper, which talks about what it calls "the insincerity of American democracy", which permits racial persecution and deprives millions of human beings of their equal rights on the basis of the color of their skin. They conclude by saying, "One cannot appear before the world as a fighter for freedom and right when one is unable to eliminate injustice in one's own house." So the writers of that editorial, presenters of that Friend of the Court brief, made it clear that there is not only an ethical imperative, but a civic and patriotic imperative as well to ensure that the things we say about democracy are matched by the things that we do in the work of democracy. So I offer that perspective now with, I hope, a particularly sharp point, given that I am standing before you underneath a set of words taken from the book of the prophet Isaiah, who talks about the importance of living as a light unto the nations. Isaiah meant that there is a certain spiritual and moral core that has to match up with the things one does in order to make sure that the nations of the world recognize that we are not only who we say, but what we do. This is why this work, this perspective, and this charge is important to us as a spiritual community and us as a patriotic community of Americans as well. I am very pleased that we have the opportunity to host this very important and timely conversation. I am delighted that you are here in our spiritual home this evening to be a part of it. I am delighted to introduce the first luminary from whom you will hear this evening. It is a pleasure for me to invite, to share a few words of welcome to you, Dawana Hamid, who is the Senior Manager of Customer Experience Administration at the Houston Public Library. Would you please make her welcome?
Good evening. First of all, thank you all for having us here tonight. Thank you also Rabbi Hyon and the congregation Emmanuel L. Houston for partnering with the Houston Public Library this evening. As we reflect this evening on Brown versus the Board of Education and its goal of educational equity, America's schools are more segregated now than they were in the early 1970s. The effects of segregation go beyond schools and students. The issue is really about the democratic nature of our civic responsibilities and our public institutions. The Houston Public Library has served over 200,000 young children inside our, in our libraries during outside school hours just this fiscal year of 2019. We have served over 43,000 elementary school and middle school youth in our after-school zones. We thank you once again for allowing the Houston Public Library to be a part of your evening.
And now I will introduce to you this evening's emcee, Lawrence J. Payne, who comes representing the Houston Public Library as well as the face of its host of strategic partnerships and civic engagement and critical conversations. You may know him as well as the face of Dialogue Houston on HCTV, now in its 25th season. You may know him from the words that he published in his book, The Heart of Houston: Lessons in Servant Leadership. He is well-known to many of us and a friend to the lucky few of us who know him well. It is a pleasure for me to invite Lawrence up to the pulpit now to share his thoughts and begin the evening. Larry?
It's just good to be here. Many of you know the context of that statement better than others, so I am pleased with the grace of God to be standing in this wonderful place of worship, to use my phrase from my good friend Steve Kleinberg, to be held, helped in the light, to be able to be here and to go forward. Let me thank Rabbi Hyon for this wonderful opportunity to work and serve in a partner with this great congregation and to Jason Polken, who is the Program Director, who has been kind of my daily partner in crime and helping to plan this. We have a great evening planned for you this evening, along with the co-hosts of all the organizations you see in your program. They're printed in your programs, so I'm not going to try to read them all to you this evening, many of whom are part of our panel as we go forward in this evening's discussion. I want to give them a great round of thanks for all their help and support as hosts of this great program. We are made for such a time as this. A house divided cannot stand; the truth shall set us free. There are all kinds of themes and co-themes that we could use for this evening's discussion. This is the 65th anniversary remembrance of Brown versus the Board of Education. We were talking with some people before we started. This is the 65th, not the 25th, not the 30th, not the 35th, the 40th, the 45th, the 50th, the 65th. Actually, you could just take the date off tonight, and it could be any one of the previous celebrations of the anniversary of Brown versus the Board. Not much has changed. In fact, most will contend we're going backwards rather than forward from the intent of Brown. I'm going to try in my own humble way quickly to just give a frame, a little context to what we're going to experience together this evening. The backdrop, the context for the text for this evening, I think, goes something like this. "We are living in a world of almost unparalleled separation. The country stands torn between two polarized views of the world that are deeply rooted in fundamental differences. People are no longer disagreeing, but instead are disavowing each other's right to their opinion. The United States is becoming more segregated than it has been in years, both politically and socially. School segregation is at a rate comparable to the 1970s. The racial divide in the United States, though never gone, has emerged more publicly again. And our organizations live, lives are feeling the tension. The tension is great in our personal, professional, and public lives. And yes, we have all three." So this evening now comes a reflective look at Brown versus the Board of Education some 65 years later. Separate and unequal then, and separate and unequal now. Let's just look at HISD for one moment, only because it is the largest school district in our area. HISD is truly in the second era of the resegregation of schools. This past school year, 209,000 young people in the ranks of HISD, 8.7, only 8.7 of the 209 were Anglo children. HISD is now referred to and known and should be known going forward as the District of the New Unempowered Majority. The New Unempowered Majority. Our future workforce are those kids who are now the new unempowered majority. Out of the 209 kids that technically on the rolls, the average daily attendance is 187,000. One has to ask what has happened to the rest of those thousands of kids who somehow did not make it to school every day. Those of you who are sitting in this room and faces, I know, who have worked with now some 50 years in this community on this issue, our own local version of Brown versus the Board of Education, as we all know, was the Lawrence Ross versus HISD, our own desegregation case, lasting some 35 years, from 1954 to 1989, finally settled on September 10, 1989. How many of you in this room, and I want to ask for your hands, remember the 70s and the battle and discussions and conversations around the Westheimer Independent School District? That era of that discussion in the 70s about a breakaway school district from HISD to create a Westside, Westheimer Independent School District, even after the people who tried to make that happen, even in 1975, when HISD was ordered to integrate, the people behind the Westheimer Independent School District, as late as 1976, said, "We're going to go forward. We're going to make this happen. We don't care what the court said. We are not going to integrate." White flight then, white flight now. I'm happy to have, sitting in the audience, Dr. Billy Reagan, who understands this better than anybody else because he was the man during that era. Welcome, Billy. Good to have you here. So we had, yes, give him a hit, definitely. So we had education by zip code then. Depending on which zip code you lived in, whether you got a great education. It depends even more today which zip code you live in, whether you get a great education. It should not be that way. It should not matter which zip code you live in, whether you get a quality education. So we have gone from segregation to desegregation to integration now to resegregation of our public school system. Now along the lines of poverty as much as race, as it was race and poverty during the first era of segregation. Texas has greater income equality than all but 13 states. Texas has greater income equality than all but 13 states. Poverty is the issue. Life expectancy, even in Harris County, is by zip code. Those of you who are fortunate enough to live in zip code 77073 has the highest life expectancy of any zip code in our area, 89.7 years of life. Those of you, unfortunately however, to live in zip code 77026 has an average lifespan of only 7.89 years. Poverty affects everything. The business of education, the business of business is education, the business of education is work, and the business of everyone is change. This is really what this is all about, change. Dr. Stephen Kleinberg is with us in our audience, who has now for 38 years been telling us, "Change is coming. Change is coming. Change is coming." It's not if and when it's going to happen, it's going to happen. Some people never wanted to hear that message. Some still do not want to hear that message. When I talk in certain parts of the city and community about the changing demographics of HISD, of Houston, Harris County, and even the state of Texas, as we approach our 200th anniversary in a short few years, the story I hear when I talk about children in urban public education, I hear the retort, "But Larry, you don't understand. Those are not my children." And here's what's interesting about that comment. It's not mean-spirited. It's not racist. It's not even in a negative way. There is a total disconnect, a total disconnect. We've given a large part of, a percentage of our population, no reason to care about the students in urban public education. They tell you, "I'm not for or against those children. I'm just not going to do anything to help them. I've raised my children. I've raised my grandchildren. I put them through school, both public and private and parochial school. Those are not my children. I have no responsibility." And then you try to make the connection, "This is our future workforce. These are the kids that are going to be inventing new drugs and serums to help save and prolong your life as you get older, et cetera." You try to make every connection that you can, and you still get the same retort. It's not even racial. There's a total disconnect. Yes, Houston is the greatest, number one most diverse city in America. We're also the number one most gated community in America. We live totally separate lives in this community. And so the question becomes, when you start talking about urban public education, is there really, is there a public for public education? Is there a democratic response as a citizen in a democracy of how I should be caring about these children? They're all our children. They've always been all our children. If we truly want change to happen, we must all take part in the process. Separate but equal has no place in our public school system. There's a wonderful new book by a gentleman called Joel Goza, I don't know if he's here or not, entitled, "America's Unholy Ghost: The Racist Roots of Our Faith in Politics." You've got to get a hand on it. He's here in Houston. Joel, J-O-E-L, Goza, G-O-Z-A. Because what's at stake is how to create effective advocates for all children. We need to create an effective advocate among adults for all children. Children don't have lobbyists. We have to be their voice. We have to be their voice for all children. But being an effective lobbyist and how to do that is very important. And so as we go forward this evening, we really must hold up and look at, what are we as a community doing in response to the challenge of the resegregation of HISD? What is my personal stake in this? How do I understand my role as a citizen in a democracy to understand that role as a citizen, to be involved in this process of urban public education? And how do I do it in a way that truly can sustain change and really make a difference? We have tried through legislation to do integration of schools and to get people to do the right thing through the laws and the legality of the system. It has not worked. You cannot change hearts and minds through legislation. This is about changing hearts and minds. This is about the moral, ethical reason as to why we as human beings exist in relationship to other human beings. It is about a human being to human being thing. And so as we go forward this evening, we're really going to try to help shake your thinking and thoughts in that. To kick us off this evening, I am proud to have someone, I think, who will set that right tone and tenure for that process. Dr. Sharon Washington is a cultural anthropologist and CEO of Tenements DC. Sharon has spent the last two decades working as an applied anthropologist in community and organization development. She is the author of The Educational Contract, which is the accumulation of a multi-year participation observation study on public education. Sharon co-founded a public school for the 7th and 8th graders of the Lower East Side of Manhattan in New York and has worked in educational research policy, program design, teacher preparation in various parts of the world, including the United States, South Africa, Mexico, and Cuba. In her current position, she has expanded her research to include explorations on connections, community, and failure. Sharon has lectured at the New School University and New School University in New York, the University of Houston, and she has worked as a journalist. She has earned her PhD in anthropology from the New School for Social Research in New York City, her undergraduate from Columbia University, and we're just happy and proud to say that she's now a Houstonian and she's here working with us. So without further ado, Dr. Sharon Washington.
Pardon me. First of all, I am also very happy to see my good friend and my mentor Larry Payne here tonight. And as he said, some of you will understand that better than others, but very happy to see you here. So I have been tasked with giving an overview of the past, the present, and the future of the historic 1954 case that we are commemorating here this evening. And because I am an anthropologist, not a historian, my overview will not be a chronological recounting, but more of an unfolding of my research around the issues of Brown within my own life and with my research participants. I didn't initially set out to study the Brown case. Initially, I wanted to ask the question of why so many African-American kids were failing school across our country. But my research inevitably led me to the Brown case. When an anthropologist steps into a new research project, she considers very carefully her own history and how it will, not might, but definitely will, impact the research. It's what I call starting with the present. So in that present moment, it's important for me to share that as a kid, I had a ritual that I carried out two or three times a week on school days. I would wake up, dread the idea of going to school, and then I would pray, actually pray to God that my mom would let me stay home that day. Then I would go into my mother's bedroom and say with the feeblest voice that I could muster, "Mom, can I please stay home today?" She almost always said yes. I would smile, thank God, then go back to bed. I hated school. In the 1970s, my elementary and secondary experiences with school were so tragic that they should have been illegal. And if my mom had not been an avid reader who read to me incessantly, I too would have been as unlucky as my peers. School was segregated in every way, by race, by what officials defined as intellectual capacity, and by the content that we were taught. Our books were literally two to four years old when we received them. We were at least two years behind our more affluent counterparts. However, as part of the mandate of the Brown ruling, which took 20 years to make it to my neighborhood in segregated Dallas, when I was in the 7th grade, we were bused to the north side of town to attend school with a predominant white population. The first time I saw the homes of my soon-to-be peers while riding through their neighborhood in our big yellow bus, it occurred to me that I had to create new goals for myself. I had never seen anything like that before, and I remember thinking, "Wow, I need new dreams." I went on to create those dreams for myself and to bring most of them to fruition. Yet 31 years later, after that realization, I continued to encounter racist behavior that argues with me about my worth as a black woman. The Brown case signified a cultural reconstruction project of huge proportions for our country. It successfully ended legal segregation in education in the United States and laid the groundwork to dismantle segregation in all sorts of areas, including housing, transportation, voting, employment, and public accommodations. It is viewed as the most significant case on race in America's history. On the 17th of May, 1954, the unanimous decision of the US Supreme Court was read concluding that, quote, "In the field of public education, the doctrine of separate but equal has no place. Separate educational facilities are inherently unequal." Now, while enthusiastically applauded, I suggest that the result of that sentiment translated the fight for equal protection under the law into a fight for integration. And with integration as the primary and highlighted focus, I present that it became the failure of Brown. For example, before I entered into education, I worked in journalism, and I was working in the newsroom in New York Newsday in 1991, when the Rodney King trial ended with a verdict that exonerated the police officers who were caught on video ruthlessly beating Mr. King, who was face down on the ground. Los Angeles erupted in violence. Black residents burned down the houses they lived in and destroyed the stores in their neighborhoods. My Anglo colleagues in the newsroom could not understand it. They asked every African-American in that newsroom, "Why would they destroy their own neighborhood?" Some of my African-American colleagues felt overwhelmed by having to explain such a seemingly nonsensical act. But it was clear to me, as someone who had grown up in a similar neighborhood, where we didn't own most of the houses and none of the businesses, where the food stores had so little respect for us that the goods they sold were so damaged, they would have been thrown into the trash in more affluent neighborhoods, where furniture merchants sold us products that were so cheaply made that they were nearly unusable long before we ever paid off the exorbitant payment plan with exaggerated interest rates that were unheard of outside of our community. It was clear to me that they were burning down the houses they lived in because they were shacks that they rented from people who would never have lived in anything so wretched themselves. This Los Angeles neighborhood is a product of what happened when 1970s integration replaced the 1954 fight for equality, which is better translated as equity. African-Americans made significant strides in expanding access to parts of the country that had been previously closed off, including schools, universities, jobs, neighborhoods. A select few black Americans who were prepared to integrate into mainstream America began to move out of black neighborhoods, and these neighborhoods, as a consequence, began to deteriorate. The communities reached a tipping point. Malcolm Gladwell, in his book of the same name, defines the tipping point as the moment of critical mass, the threshold, the boiling point. He argues that change quickly and unexpectedly occurs when people buy into an idea to tip the scales in a different direction. However, he contends that the percentage needed to tip the scales in a different direction is quite small. For example, he documents how a neighborhood drastically changes when only about 20% of the residents change. He shows with empirical evidence that if only about 20% of the residents of a neighborhood are professionals, then that community will be a desirable place to live. However, if less than 20% of the residents are professionals, then the neighborhood will depreciate. So in other words, I contend that black neighborhoods lost their most important asset with integration. They lost their examples. In the 1970s, most of the professionals moved out of the black neighborhoods, leaving them to decline. By the 1980s, crack cocaine found its way into black neighborhoods and rendered them utterly incapacitated. In 2003, I conducted a research project in one of these neighborhoods in the Third Ward. My research followed three families for two years. Each one of those families is actually a compilation of several families in three different areas of the Third Ward. And I call these families the Freemans, the Strivers, and the Mans. The Freemans are categorized in the socioeconomic class of the working poor, and they are a compilation of about five different actual families that I followed, who lived in an area of Third Ward known as the Bottoms. The Strivers, an upper-middle-class African-American family, which is compiled of about seven different actual families, and they represented a bordering neighborhood only a mile and a half away from the Freemans. And the Mans, an upper-middle-class Anglo family comprised of about four different actual families, who worked and attended school less than a mile away from the Bottoms at the University of Houston. For the purposes of this presentation, I will only focus on the Mans because it further illustrates the unintended failure of Brown. The Man family represents the ideal American construct of a family and serves as the model for all school reform efforts. Governments, nonprofits, and private efforts use this central place to determine reform programs. They define this model as the norm. I discovered that this norm is also associated with what is "natural," and "natural" is in quotes. This notion of what is natural is embedded in one of the oldest ideals of this nation, the Declaration of Independence. So when I speak of "natural," I mean the thing in question is inherited and is manifested biologically. I made this discovery while researching the history of school in this country and how school was designed to create a sense of normalcy that was over the past generations. school was designed to create a sense of normalcy that was, over the past generations of the existence of the country, had sought to ally itself with nature. This document begins with, "We hold these truths to be set evident." Such a statement implies that what is about to be put forth is truth, and that the truth is obvious, it is visible, and it is non-negotiable. It is part of a natural order. A natural order suggests inherent qualities in nature, which some people believe are designed by God. This belief is authenticated in America's history through policies that categorize Black Americans as non-human, as chattel. Therefore, educational policies that marginalize kids of color and establish white kids as the norm are considered to be natural, biologically inherited and set in law. My discovery of this information prompted me to return to my memories where I experienced the devastation of what it means to be outside of this naturalized identity. The process of becoming a part of a naturalized community looks for inscriptions on one's consciousness and even on the body that are often painful to take on or endure. The inscriptions create cognitive dissonance between one's own body and their desire for normalcy. So that brings us to the point of how might we move forward toward our future? I don't exactly have an answer, but in the meeting that we had among the panelists and myself, one of my colleagues told me he has the answer, so I'm really looking forward to hearing it. But in the interim, I'd like to explore an idea within the notion of the failure of Brown. Ethnographically, I suggest that integration was the failure of Brown. Theoretically, however, this failure not only presents us with tragic experiences of racial discrimination and divide, but also with new possibilities for the future. For a moment, I want to suggest that we consider failure seriously, by making it paramount within the scope of the investigation, not as the lesser brother of success. When we highlight the concept of failure itself, then we can more clearly see that failure occurs when objectification ceases to adhere. This is to suggest that in the collective societal project of the Brown ruling inscribing itself in the world, failure happened when the social stuff of that inscription behaved in ways other than intended. Therefore, there is implicitly, within this working definition, a temporal and a moral aspect. Failure then becomes a moment of breakage between the reality of the present and the anticipated future. In that sense, failure is the gap that follows the collapse of one mode of life and precedes the development of a new one. In other words, failure is the awkward silence when one person stops speaking and before the next person responds. I propose that we sit in this gap today, with opportunities of every sort to reengage the original ideas of equity that drove the Brown case and the ruling. I would ask each of you in the audience today to consider yourselves as one member of a two-person dialogue that stopped in the 1970s with integration and is waiting for your response. How will you break the silence? What will be your answer? Thank you.
So before you leave, you're gonna get your partner, and you're gonna choose your partner and carry on the dialogue. We're gonna make an announcement at the end, how we're gonna help facilitate that. We have a plan to exactly follow up on that. Before I call our wonderful panel up for the next part of our presentation, I want to mention something, because Kelly Frails, many of you know Kelly Frails, who is the HISD lawyer, outside counsel for HISD for 38 years throughout this whole period of integration, segregation, desegregation. Kelly wanted to be here tonight, but he could not be able, was unable to be here. But Kelly has a book. Kelly has a book that has just come out, School Laws Evolution, excuse me, School Laws Evolution: Reflections of a Texas Lawyer. It is all about the whole 38 years of being HISD's lawyer around the desegregation case. It is a fascinating reading. It chronologues this whole era better than anyone probably could do because he has all the facts. All right, it is time to bring up our wonderful panel. I'll introduce them, and as they come join us here on stage in order of their presentation tonight. First, Fran Victoria Stephens, who is the Civil Rights Attorney and President of Story Square Incorporated. Fran, please join us. Dr. David Abraham, Rice University Research Sciences, West School of Natural Sciences. He's coming forward. Next is Stephen Scarborough, the Manager of Strategic Initiatives for our Great Center for Houston's Future. Next is Mandy Sheridan Kimball, the Director of Public Policy and Governmental Affairs at Children at Risks, and Gregory Gomez, the Program Director of Leadership ISD, Harris County. They will probably tell you a little bit more about themselves and then their presentation. And here's how it's gonna work. Each one of them will make an opening statement about the issues that we're discussing tonight from their own perspective. I will then come back and ask each one of them a follow-up question geared to their particular work and activity, and then we're gonna open it up to you. So be thinking about your questions and comments and observations, concerns, to the panel and to Dr. Washington, who we also will bring back to the stage. And I'm just gonna say now, without me having to say it, because you all know, this is a question when it comes to question time? Question. Not statements, not pronouncements, not questions. All right, Fran, if you would be so kind as to kick us off, and we'll just go down the line, and we'll go from there. There's a microphone in front of you, water's to your side of your chair, and away we go.
Good evening, everybody. I'd actually like to start with adopting the logic of Sandro Galea, who is an author and dean at Boston University's School of Public Health. He was at a public lecture recently when someone asked the question to him in an idealistic way, "How can we ensure that everyone has optimal health?" It's pretty idealistic, right? His answer was antithetical. It was a bite of reality. His response was, "We can ensure that every child is born to a white, well-off family." For some of us, that's a hard pill to swallow, especially me, because I'm not white, and nor was I born to a well-off family. So, you know, I thought about this statement a lot, and he wasn't being pessimistic. He was understanding and conveying the current societal structure that we're facing now. We absolutely can't buy into this preposterous notion that we can ensure every child is born to a white, well-off family to ensure an optimal education. Yet, the legal soldiers of Brown believed that if we could place children whose circumstances were opposite, their circumstances created a potentially dismal future, into a classroom with children who had this opportunity for optimal education, that optimal futures would win. They called this desegregation. They believed that desegregation was the Underground Railroad to equality. See, equality would say, "How can we replicate the experiences of white, well-off families to ensure every child has an optimal education?" This is a pretty narrow approach, wouldn't you say? But I believe equity, this term that we sometimes use interchangeably with equality, is more of an expert of the human experience. It operates with a more sophisticated savvy. In law, we call, we would call equity the long-armed jurisdiction. It not only addresses, but it eliminates the true culprit of segregation, inequality. You might ask, Fran Victoria, how, how can equity eliminate equality? Well, I have three propositions. In opposition to Jeremy Waldron's book, God, Lock, and Equality, we must acknowledge that equality is an anachronism. It's actually the opposite of what Brown was trying to achieve, inequality. It's proven to be simply out of date or obsolete. It cannot serve as the antidote to our social regression. As a result, equity must become an issue, ever-present in the Overton window. It must become the language we use in contemporary discourse, rather than equality. I'll close with this in my opening statement. I was listening to a Washington Post podcast a couple of days ago in preparation for today, and there was a father who was grappling with where to send his high school student, they're a white family, to high school. And they were at odds because he had always chosen the community school. And the community schools were failing schools, but he felt strongly, as a school choice advocate, to invest in their neighborhood and community. The moderator, while the father was grappling with this contention for his own personal situation, asked, "Is this a community issue or a system issue?" Well, the real Brown story would tell us that their initial plea, Lynda Brown's father, actually wanted access. His plea was not for desegregation. His plea was not for equality. His plea was for access. They wanted justice through access. They saw a community and wanted them to understand the rigors of raising children and the longing to provide an optimal education. This system has failed. We've used legislative systems, judicial systems, and administrative systems, and they failed us at each point along our timeline. I believe that we can create justice, but it's at the community level. It's not until we, as a community, understand what my civil rights mentor wrote in a Birmingham jail. You all might know him as the drum major of justice, but for me, he's my mentor. An injustice to anywhere, an injustice anywhere, is a threat to justice everywhere. We're caught in a network of mutuality and tied in a garment of destiny. When will we understand mutuality? When we do, we too, like equity, become experts in the human experience. And we, like that long-armed jurisdiction, will develop long arms, long enough to embrace the ugly truth of our American history.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Stephen Scarborough. Thank you for all being here. It's a delight to be here. I'd like to thank our host and the indomitable Larry Payne for inviting me to be on this panel. I'm here today from the Center for Houston's Future, and for those of you who aren't familiar, we're a small but mighty nonprofit organization affiliated with the Greater Houston Partnership. And what we try to do is identify the most pressing issues that are going to affect the future of our region and connect business leaders, civic leaders, and community leaders to collaborate and come up with solutions for them. So I'm not an education expert, but I have spent a lot of time at the center looking at how Houston's doing in terms of inclusion and socioeconomic mobility. And, you know, what's apparent is that formal segregation might not exist in schools anymore, but we're far away from a level playing field. So I was just looking at the latest HISD performance scores today. And if you look at fourth graders, black fourth graders, a third of them are reading at their grade level. There are white classmates, it's nearly three-quarters. And, you know, we know that's not because white kids have some particular aptitude to read. It speaks to a structural inequity in our system. So the main point I'd like to make tonight is that Justice Warren's powerful message written 65 years ago, that "separate is inherently unequal," means that true integration in our schools will have to involve efforts to desegregate our larger community. So at its heart, Brown v. Board can be seen about the equality of opportunity. That is our right. We want all our kids to have a fair chance. But providing well-equipped schools and capable teachers isn't enough. In order to ensure equal access for our kids, we needed to address the socioeconomic issues that impede their ability to learn and develop. So poverty is a huge educational barrier. We all know this. How do you learn when you're hungry, when you have health issues that aren't being treated? Ideally, we'd have a system that would offer services to these kids, but, you know, that's just not a comprehensive thing that's in place right now. Unfortunately, what's been happening in Houston is that for decades, over decades, is that is the segregation and the concentration of poverty. So probably the foremost expert in the country right now on social mobility is this guy named Raj Chetty. He's an economist at Harvard, and a lot of what his research does, has to do with is he talks about how, what zip code you're born in has a huge effect on what your life looks like as an adult in terms of your earnings, your health outcomes, your educational attainment. And he identifies three primary factors that influence social mobility. They're segregation, income inequality, and the quality of your education. So for example, his research shows that if you just have a qualified, experienced kindergarten teacher, on average, your adult earnings are going to be about $1,100 higher a year. And that's just kindergarten. So how are we doing on those three issues? In many ways, we've been falling behind in terms of making progress to ensure that all our kids have a fair chance. So I just want to focus on income segregation, because that is a, just a key story in what's been happening in Houston. So as of about 2016, depending on how you measure it, we're either the first to fourth most income-segregated city in the country. And 30, 40 years ago, it wasn't like that at all. We were, we were normal, we were moderate. And, you know, since 1980, the level of income segregation has doubled. So what this means is that poorer and richer families are a lot less likely to live in the same neighborhoods. So in 1980, nearly, over nearly 90% of all of us lived in mixed-income communities. Nowadays, that figure has plummeted to under 70%. And the significance of this is that if you're born into concentrated poverty, it's just incredibly difficult to find your way out of that. You don't have exposure to successful peers, to role models. It's likely you go to a school that isn't as well-funded. You don't have the kind of support structures in place that are available in more affluent communities. And that makes all the difference. You know, there's empirical evidence that shows. So what's been happening is we segregate poverty, and then it turns into a perpetuating cycle. And on a personal note, it makes people, it makes it easy for people to see our kids as those kids. And so you see the effect of isolating people by class play out along school district lines. So there's a 2016 study from an organization called EdBuild, and it shows that income segregation in schools is taking place at the district level. So school district boundaries are the new separate but equal. The example here would be, if you look at HISD, we have about a quarter of the students in HISD are Black. In adjacent KDISD, it's 1 in 10. In HISD, the child poverty rate is 37%. In KD, it's 8%. That is the new separate but equal. And we've, we've never desegregated in effect. So, you know, I don't know what the answer is, but I do have one suggestion to, to think about, which is the idea of what is called a place-based policies. And so what differentiates this kind of approach is not trying to target individuals who are in need, but to focus on building communities. What that could look like might be scaling existing programs. There's a wonderful organization called Prounitas that operates in schools like Kashmir Gardens. HISD just started a program called the Community Schools Program. And what these programs do is they offer wraparound services. They make sure that a kid has everything he or she needs to be They make sure that a kid has everything he or she needs to be able to learn once he or she's at school, whether that be counseling, food assistance, laundry. The, you know, the other idea with place-based solutions is to start thinking about how to economically desegregate this region, to think about how we can look at our housing policies and start putting low-income housing, not just in poor neighborhoods, but affording people more opportunity by, by diversifying the economic characteristics of the households in our neighborhoods.
Adona isifti tiftaufi yagi tihilateha. May God open my lips and my mouth, will speak your praises. It was very touching, and, and it was very, very warm and heartfelt. I wanted to tell you about your opening presentation tonight, Sharon. I grew up in a place that was very different. And so tonight, I wanted to talk about community. At my elementary school, I have two brothers. We all went to the same elementary school. It was one of the best elementary schools in the place I grew up. And at 11, we had a merit-based exam that would place us into, our middle schools and high schools are mixed. So if you score really well on this, this test, you get placed into high schools, middle schools, based on merit, and there's a range. And as most of you know, everything is normally distributed. So you get a few really good schools, several mediocre schools, and a few really bad ones. And thank God, I placed in, in the, the best school on the island. And I have my, a brother who went to one of the middle schools, and another one who went to one of the lower schools. The first time I visited, my younger brother, who went to one of the worst schools on the island, the first time I went to his high school, I was shocked at the difference between his school and mine. My playgrounds had grass on them. His, there, there was no grass. The classrooms, there were chairs everywhere thrown around and broken, and the board was, you couldn't, I can't imagine how a teacher could, the boards were broken. The, the outside of the school was actually better than the indoor classroom experience at that school. And I cried, because I didn't want my brother to go through that, but he did. The last time I visited my brother, two years ago, he said to me, "You know, I'm the most important person on the island right now." And I was like, "What are you talking about?" And he says, "Yes, this is, uh, this is the time of carnival." And he works for one of the biggest marketing agencies on the island, so everybody's coming to him for sponsorship, so he's the most important person. He says, "Look, you see that person over there? That's Rihanna's brother. He needs me." So we grew up in a community that had physical attributes, social attributes, and, and economic attributes, as well as political attributes. And that community did not stop him from, from aspiring to all he wanted to be. He didn't like education. You know, go figure why, right? He said, "I'm not going yet. I just want to make money." And he's a really great guy, so he ended up working for a marketing agency, and he's a director now for that agency, because he grew up in a community that had fewer restrictions on aspirations. My other brother recently visited, and he's got a contract with Shell to do marketing down in the Caribbean. So, so both of them are doing really well, again, based on community. And the community's not having these restrictions that might prohibit folks from aspiring. Thank God, I, I was able to go after my own aspirations. The place I grew up was predominantly people that looked like me, and I had the physical and the mental and the spiritual slash moral dexterity to achieve things that I wanted. And so what I would like to share with you today is based on a discussion I had with a close friend who was a former principal at a school. And, and she agrees that, you know, the work that, the research I do, the work I do with regards to community building and community development is probably the most important thing, because the system is structurally, has its difficulties. It's, it's, it has its difficulties, and perhaps we can make more strides at the community level again. Our mayor is currently, Mayor Sylvester Turner, is currently promoting a complete communities plan. I don't know if you guys heard of his State of the City recently, but it was very inspiring. And, and he would like to target resources into underserved areas in the city. And he's got businesses willing to support that effort. My philosophy that I would like to use tonight is coming from, from a guy called Abraham Maslow, who most of you know set up this model in, in psychology called the hierarchy of needs. And there are a couple of the topics that I'll, I'll list and then pass the microphone. I'd like to talk about implicit bias. There's issues with equity and equality that you probably hear us talk about. Accessibility versus availability. You know, the fact that our school district has a $3 billion budget. It's not a small budget. The city of Houston actually has a $5 billion budget. So, you know, is there a question of funding here? As I mentioned, systematic and structural issues in the schools. There is issues of testing versus learning. The physical needs, as we mentioned, of our kids. And please don't think this is just a problem with poverty or poor areas, right? This is, this is, these are problems that affect the normal distribution of people in our area, because the median income here in our region is only $55,000 approximately for a family, right? A family, $55,000. So we, we in this room might not be representative of the average or median family in our region. We could talk about the ecosystem that surrounds our schools and our communities. Again, we should be recognizing that it's not a poverty problem. It's a middle-class problem, squarely middle-class problem in our city. Free lunches, right? Free lunches is a thing. The zip code that might dictate your outcomes, the fact that we have distressed communities. We all have, maybe not all of us, I would, I would gather, 80% of us have heard the familiar term that the most preferred real estate in our city is in the 610 loop, but only 20% of that area is actually where most people end up going. And so there's more of an, when you look at our city geographically, it's not the center versus the outside. It's actually east versus west. And the border used to be on Main Street, and it's now moved maybe a mile or two to the east. It's now on 288, as it runs up to 59. We could talk about redlining. What does redlining look like today? Has anybody ever looked at a map of the Walgreens locations in our city? If you, if you look at a publicly traded, at most publicly traded companies and their locations, their preferred locations in our city, those places tend to favor what, you know, rhetorically, we might say is the upper-end market, which is that 20% of the inner city. We could talk about freeways that run through our city, and the fact that initially, they disrupted neighborhoods. But today, they disrupt all of us because of traffic. Those people who live in the suburbs end up having to use those highways, and most of us then can't use those highways because we know, you know, it's going to be too much traffic. We could talk about bait and switch, and whether or not the 1954, the 1954 case was a case of bait and switch, where we give you something, but then, you know, we do redlining, or we do preferred entrance and jobs, et cetera. We could talk about comprehensive planning. We could talk about the fact that we know you might have a street and it gets torn up three different times by three different government agencies. So there's a problem with, you know, again, should HISD and the city of Houston put their budgets together and operate more efficiently, because we have physical and geographical considerations with regards to where schools are located? We could talk about middle-class politics. Most of us vote. Most of us vote. But do we truly feel as if we're represented beyond our subdivision and our homeownership association? We are a city of 2.3 million people approximately, and we have 11 city council representatives, and each one represents approximately 200,000 of us. So he can't meet with all of us. We could talk about the fact that it's absurd to put the problem on the backs of the schools, the teachers, the system. We could talk about, lastly, in closing, I promise, we could talk about our values. What are our value systems? Since we are in a synagogue, you know, can we talk about religious values or moral values? And, and with that, you know, I'd like to end. Oh, by the way, I put together this list in 30 minutes, talking to this principal. Each of you should try talking to a principal of an elementary school, because there's a bunch to learn from these guys.
Good evening. My name's Mandy Kimball, and I am with Children at Risk. And for those of you who are not familiar with the organization, we're a research and advocacy nonprofit here in the Houston area, Dallas, and Fort Worth. And I'm excited to announce that I'm home. I've been going back and forth for the last six months to Austin. The legislative session has convened on Monday. Can we applaud for that one? Yeah! And, and there are a lot of conversations around the school system. The people having those conversations, I don't think were necessarily representative, representative of the state of Texas. When we look at the education system and we look at our student population, we know that more than half of the children, half of the students are black or Hispanic. We know that less than half of the students are reading on grade level by third grade. And we know that only 20% of the students that graduate are actually completing college. And so this is something that everyone should be concerned about, and the legislature is talking about what is the future of Texas? What is our economic stability? And they've been saying that for a while, but we really haven't seen a huge shift. We haven't seen a large change. And so this session really was the first time that they talked about school finance and the formula funding, right? And, and we are excited that they allocated $6 billion more dollars into the public education system, and that is absolutely fantastic. Would like to remind everybody that they also cut $5.4 billion in 2011, right? And there was another lawsuit. And was it constitutional? And was the state really owning up to the responsibility and the obligation of our students? It came back saying, "Technically, I guess so, but you should really work on it." Last session, they're like, "We're not going to pass anything, but we'll put a commission together, put our heads together, and see what comes out of it," right? So I am happy, though, to say that there was, there was some good conversations around what the needs are of, of our public education system, and that people are coming from different places. And yes, absolutely, it is inequitable. And you were talking about access. People don't have the same access to these schools. And I think more importantly, we have to talk about what kind of supports are going into the school system, because that's where we are. It's not just about learning. I think we all wish that it could be, that a child could sit in the classroom and they're ready to learn, but that isn't the case. Many children aren't starting off right. When we look at infant mortality, and, and black children are dying twice the rate of any other racial group or ethnicity group, we have a problem. When we look at maternal mortality, and 40% of the women who are dying are black, that is a problem. We have, we need healthy families, we need healthy communities, and we need a system. And we can talk more about school finance, if y'all want to, in a little bit, but we, but we know what works, and we need those support systems within our education system. We need them within our healthcare system so that kids can show up ready to learn. There is a lot of conversation also, and there has been, and I think that we can say yay, and Kleinberg, wherever you are, pre-K is extremely important. And we finally have funding, formula funding for full-day pre-K, which is extremely needed. Absolutely. It's wonderful. But we also have to admit that there's not a silver bullet. And so full-day pre-K is extremely important, so is that quality K through 12. But a lot of the conversations that we have been having is around the working poor. And we have thousands of families who are low-income, who are trying to go to work, and where are their kids, right? And childcare and access, again, to quality childcare. I know a lot of people have heard of food deserts, but there's childcare deserts. And what are those interactions with those, with those students, with those teachers or those caregivers in language, right? And speaking to them, with reading to them, with their curriculum? Can they sit in a classroom so that when they get to pre-K, that they're ready to take off? These are all conversations, and I don't mean to digress or say, you know, it's too complicated, because it's not. But it needs to be a systems change. We need to have inter-agency coordination, like you were talking about in regards to funding. Where can we be most efficient? Where's the transparency? And again, accountability. And I think that has to do at the state level, at the local level, and within our communities to ensure that all children thrive.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Gregory Gomez, and I work for Leadership ISD, which is an education advocacy organization that started in Dallas nine years ago, but here in Houston just two years ago. And we run fellowships and governance trainings and promote civic engagement for public education in our city. And it's just such an honor to be here tonight, because I'm actually a part of this community, the Emanuel community as well. And I want to thank Rabbi Hayon from his Hol Nidre sermon and his commitment to having these types of conversations, not just that night, as you said, but throughout the year, and continuing them with Reverend Barber, and then now, tonight, to have these important conversations. So it's an honor on multiple levels to be here. I want to go back to what Larry said, because this is what I ground myself in, in thinking about this Brown versus Board, and thinking about public education, thinking about education. I'm a former teacher and principal. And in South Los Angeles, East LA, in New York, I worked with prisoners on Rikers Island. And what is important to mention tonight is that when I was a principal in the Kashmir Gardens area, I saw a level of emotional distress in the students that I had not seen anywhere else in the country. And in Los Angeles, in New York, even on Rikers Island, the connectivity that either prisoners had to the security guards was stronger than the connectivity that students had to the rest of the city in Kashmir Gardens. And the best way that I can describe it is that they simply just felt forgotten. And when Larry talks about life expectancy by zip code, and we know that the richest American men in our country are living 15 years longer than the poorest American men, and the richest American women are living 10 years longer than the poorest women, and we lay on top of that race, that seven, that black families own seven cents to every dollar that white families own of wealth, and Latino families own eight cents to every dollar that white families own, it is not cliche to say that this is a matter of life and death, that socially isolating communities is a matter of life and death. Because what we also know with the stress, the science of stress, is that uncertainty brings debilitating effects to the brain and body. It is literally eating away- It is literally eating away at the prefrontal cortex in our brains. The cortisol eats away at the prefrontal cortex of students' minds before we ask them to sit down in that chair for eight hours and self-regulate and show more grit and sit for a test for five hours. So I think that one of the most, the things that I go back to in all of the science of stress, which is really important, is the level of uncertainty that poverty and social isolation, segregation bring to the brain and body. So thinking about the uncertainty of not knowing where your next meal is coming from, the uncertainty of not having clothing, the uncertainty of not having consistent shelter, the uncertainty of not having documented immigration status, the uncertainty of getting in a car and driving, that uncertainty is eating away at the students' minds before we even ask what we ask of them. And so taking it into the schools, I want to talk about some really important segregation data. When Leadership ISD first started, we went into the Worthing feeder pattern on the south side of the city. And I think as we explored in ways that we could support any of those schools, we found some data that kind of shows how socially isolated, how debilitating we are, the situation is. So for instance, we took the Worthing feeder pattern, which is, you know, a set of eight schools, and then compared them to kind of top-performing, high-flying schools that receive six or seven distinctions from the T E A. So, you know, the high-flying schools you've heard of, West University, River Oaks Elementary, Horn, Bush, Mandarin Chinese Language, T H Rogers, Lanier, Carnegie Vanguard. And when you look at the economically disadvantaged levels at, say, one of those schools, Bastion Elementary in the Worthing feeder pattern, Bastion Elementary's student population is economically disadvantaged at 99.1%, as compared to West University, which is disadvantaged at 1.4%. When you look at student mobility rate, defined as a student who's missed six weeks or more in the past school year, look at Worthing High School. Worthing High School had a student mobility rate of 37.4%, and Carnegie Vanguard High School had a student mobility rate of 1.6%. Think about the uncertainty, remember debilitating effects on the mind, the uncertainty of not knowing which of your friends is going to show up that day to your school. Or how about the uncertainty of teachers? The average years of leadership experience for principals in the Worthing feeder pattern is 14.1 years of experience. And for those top-performing schools, the average years of experience is 21 years of experience. 14 years of experience versus 21. My son, who's six, who's going to go to a school not too far from here, will have a principal who's been at his school since 1991. Certainty. I know she'll be there. These are segregated schools, these are socially isolated schools, and the exacerbated uncertainty within them is killing children. And so radical kinship, a way forward, begins with proximity, not only to the story of the schools as we hear it right now, but to showing up right next to, walking alongside the readily left-out, the easily despised, the marginalized, the socially isolated. And we can't be proximal if we are segregated, nor is that how humans are designed to thrive. So in a very moral sense, we need to work collectively on the problem, which, as Mother Teresa says, is that we have just simply forgotten that we belong to each other. And it's our moral imperative to do that. Thank you.
Let's give all the panel a quick, another round of applause. That was great. Before I ask each one of them a tailor-made question for them to respond to quickly, and then we'll turn it over to you, the audience, I want to make a couple of quick announcements of who enters in the room. Mayor Turner actually had thought he was going to be able to swing by here for a hot minute, but that's not going to happen. But in his stay, it's wonderful, William Paul Thomas from the mayor's office. William Paul, please stand up and just let everybody see you. We're going to do a follow-up to this evening at some point, and the mayor and others will be involved in that, because we really want to talk about the concrete next steps. Also, some of our partner representatives are here, I want to just mention them, Justin Robinson, Houston Area Urban League, Justin, CEO and president, glad to have you here. Dan Snare, American Leadership Forum CEO, Dan, thank you very much for being here. And Larry Massey, representing the president of University St. Thomas, Dr. Ludwig Larry Massey, thank you all for being here. All right, a tailor-made question for each one of our panelists as a follow-up, and then quickly, as we said, and then to you, our wonderful audience, for your Q and A. And I'm going to start with Greg and work my way backwards this way. Greg, I want you to really home in on this question of leadership. It is a question and a challenge for leadership to rise up and take his rightful role in place in trying to be the voice that we need in a collective manner to solve the situation we're in with the challenges and aspirational goals. It is about leadership. And the vacuum of leadership that exists, and the collective voices of leadership being in unison, is part of the hole that we keep digging deeper and deeper for ourselves in urban public education. Can you speak to that a little bit, and what particularly your organization is doing to address that?
So I didn't get this question beforehand, so I'm thinking about it right now.
No, you don't get the question beforehand.
And I just want to say that I think leadership is critical, and if you look, I always go back to stress. And I want to kind of ask, just to show of hands, who in this room kind of viscerally disagreed with the majority of what has been said tonight? Okay, good. No one in here viscerally disagreed with the majority of what's been said tonight. But there are leaders, to the leadership question, there are leaders in this city, in this state, in this country, that will have viscerally disagreed to things that have said tonight. And they are not here tonight, because it would be a stressful experience to be here. And because innately, biologically, I think those leaders know that it will be, to go back to life expectancy, years off of their lives to acquiesce the power that they hold. It will be years off of their lives. And yet, lives have been taken already. And so there are leaders in this room right now, city leaders in this room right now. But there are also not city leaders, there are also not policy leaders, there are also not business leaders in this room right now. And plug for Leadership ISD, Leadership ISD is attempting to kind of connect this unimaginable potential between some of the leaders who are behind this message and who are willing to amplify that message and take it to those same leaders that also need to hear it.
All right. Mandy, we have learned a lot about high-poverty schools. We have learned what works, what makes them work, we've learned how they've achieved and overcome. Children at Risk has a great plethora of lessons learned about what we understand how high-poverty schools can achieve. Would you speak to that a little bit more, please?
So Children at Risk has been doing school rankings for over a decade, which is quite controversial. And the point is not to say where you are, but really to learn from the lessons. And so when we say high-poverty, high-performing schools, what are those indicators or those variables that allow those schools and students to outperform their peers? And it's clear, you can look across the state. It is quality early education, quality pre-K. It is teachers with a missionary zeal. It is quality teachers, looking at the quality and the tenure and experience that can go in there, and support systems also that are extremely important. And so it's not something that we don't know, or that it's some complicated formula. So why is it that there are some schools being able to achieve it and others? And this is when I think it also comes back to principals and leadership and the community, and the community bringing in, helping to bring in those resources, people looking at the data, what is working and what is not, and how can we learn from our mistakes? How can we use that information right now to inform our teachers, which is extremely important?
Thank you. David Abraham, you have learned some stuff in your work with Complete Communities for the city of Houston about how the necessity of bringing groups of individuals together to begin the dialogue of what is their common vision for what they want for their community, and how to get people to sit together and actually plan that out. Share quickly with us some of those lessons learned from that process.
So again, the community could be framed as a function of physical, those physical attributes and elements that are in a community, you know, whether or not our kids, or, you know, again, I really would like us to kind of own this problem. Question as to whether or not we have access to neighborhood parks is very important for our own health. Can we walk to a neighborhood park? And does it have those elements that, you know, we could spend time there and feel comfortable? Or do we have to get in our car and drive to Discovery Green, right, and celebrate this amazing thing in our city? Other elements that of today are exceedingly important and stressful are those questions around resilience and whether or not we are all vulnerable from flooding. As many of you may or may not know, Bayou property is, quite frankly, prime property. And that property today is vulnerable. And anybody who drives along Braze Bayou would see houses being raised, you know, 4,000 to 10,000 square feet homes being raised, five or six feet. But the striking thing is that not all the homes are being raised, right? So you have the question as to, well, what about that guy? You know, he lives in this neighborhood, what's going on? So I know people like that, that I meet with, quite frankly, and it's a challenge for me to, you know, objectively use science to determine what a resilient strategy might be, and then talk to a person who's going through this and who I know, again, is not poor. This person is middle-class, actually, this person is upper-middle-class. But he says, quite frankly, he cannot afford the $200,000 loan that he would have to take on top of his $600,000 mortgage to raise his own home. So he's going to flood again, and he's flooded three times in the last three years, right? So, you know, then there's questions with regards to housing, the housing experience here. The Housing Authority says there are not enough, they don't have enough money to facilitate the need for homes for those most vulnerable, right? Then the neighborhood is also a sum total of its social functions. And as Larry pointed out, we are quite, you know, we talk about Houston being a very, relatively diverse city. And if you look around the room, you can see a certain amount of diversity. But many of us choose to live in our bedroom communities. Many of us do not have the option to walk to the corner store, unless you actually grew up in a neighborhood like Sharon. And Sharon can tell you that that was possible in that kind of a neighborhood. I actually have breakfast most mornings with people who grew up in your neighborhood, Sharon. And one of them retired at 55. He moved from that neighborhood and moved down to Braze Bayou. He retired at 55. He's now volunteering with feeding people on Meals for Wheels programming. Another person who grew up in that neighborhood and moved, that I have breakfast with almost every morning, he runs a housing, he has a housing development business for affordable housing. And he has several properties for affordable housing. And he frequently laments the disconnect between his ability to facilitate quality homes and lack of support from the public governance structure, vis a vis taxes that they're going to charge, right? We want to see an incremental increase in housing value. So every year, he has to pay more to our county for taxes, but he can't charge more for rents, because people might not be able to pay. So he's got that personal dilemma going on. So on the economic side, again, we have issues of business availability. And so we could talk about several structural elements. And thankfully, again, the mayor, in his absence, you know, I'd like to say that he's doing a great job trying to mobilize folks to invest in these disenfranchised communities.
Stephen, we talk a lot through the process that the work the Center for Houston's Future does around scenario planning. And the one I'd like for you to speak about is the one you did a few years ago, which I think very clearly talks about where we are, the one that clearly talks about the have and the have-nots, or, as some would say, the tale of two cities, the tale of two Houston's. Can you speak to that a little bit, please? Because that was a very significant piece.
Sure. So about maybe eight years ago, the center embarked on a kind of strategic planning process for the Houston region. And what we did was, we went out into the community and brought together leaders to put together visions or scenarios of how they saw Houston in year 2040. So ultimately, we came out with two scenarios. The first, I believe, is called "Learning to Live," you know, and I guess you could describe it as like, you know, Norway light, Sweden light, you know, we're more enlightened, you know, we're more equal, there are more services. We grow not as quickly, perhaps, but equity, but we mature as a city, and equity becomes more important. The other scenario that our group put together was called, something that worked. And it had to do with, you know, it was basically Houston on steroids. So think, you know, in 2040, we don't have a public education system anymore. That's been privatized by corporate employers. So, you know, when you get a job in Houston, your company, you know, just like a company might provide childcare or daycare, now they're doing K through 12 education. We grow at a quicker rate, we have higher inequality, and, you know, it's just about growth. I think one of the ironies of putting together these scenarios is about, you know, three or four years in, try to get some life out of them, and everybody keeps saying, this scenario is kind of the reality. You know, this is kind of what's been happening. This is in 2040, this is now. Or at least, it's the path we're on.
Houston will celebrate in 17 years its 200th anniversary in 2036. We've been asking everyone, what is your number-one aspirational goal for Houston by 2036? Some people have come up with some great ideas. The second part of that question is, and how would you be acting and behaving today if you really wanted to see that happen? That scenario that they did eight years ago about 2040 and Houston's future, the tale of two cities, the have and have-nots, is exactly what's happening today. We need to take that off the shelf, dust it off, and bring it back in the forefront, because it's exactly what is happening today. Fran, in your work that you do through Story Square and other things you do, you try to bring people together to understand how to play out their humanistic part of being a human being with civility to and for each other in a world that seems to be totally lacking more and more of civility. Talk to that for a few minutes, will you? Thank you.
The organization that Larry mentioned is an organization that I founded called Story Square. And Story Square is the result of realizing the inequitable effects of a community. the inequitable effects of a community that has been totally neglected. We believe at Story Square that parents are the centrifugal force for equity. There's a great piece from the Center for Public Education from Johns Hopkins University. They did a longitudinal study. They spent millions of dollars. And the consequence of this study was this groundbreaking statement. I remember I called my dad, I said, Daddy, I have this great piece of research. She said, Lay it on me, what is it? Tell me, come on, come on, I've been waiting for this. And I said, regardless of race, regardless of culture, ethnicity, national origin, every parent wants their child to succeed. And he said, you know, that's a shame. Call me when you have some real research. And I was, you know, I was deep in it. So I said, what, daddy, what is it? And he said, you know, they had to research? That every parent wants their child to succeed? And as I begun, as I began this journey doing the work of Story Square, that's the civility that Larry is talking about. That's the mutuality that Martin Luther King is beseeching us to realize. How in the world can you be a parent? Can you have birthed a child and not realize that your neighbor cares just as much as you do? It is uncivil to think otherwise. There's this idea that new mothers don't sleep. It's not an idea, I have two children, we don't sleep, okay? But the idea that some mothers can sleep when their children are running fevers of 104 degrees and other mothers cannot is impractical. All parents want their children to succeed. At Story Square, we believe that it's not only parents, but it's the educational interaction between parent and child. And so obviously, we all understand what might prevent an educational interaction between a parent and child. But surprisingly, the Bureau of Labor Statistics has a survey every year about how Americans spend their time. And would you believe only 1.2 minutes a day, 1.2 minutes a day are spent on educational interactions between parents and children? It's not necessarily a have or have-nots issue. It's about where are we going to place our values as parents? And understanding, as I mentioned before in my opening statement, understanding the rigors of parenthood? And understanding that every parent wants their child to succeed? And the way that they do that, the way children succeed is with a quality education, which they're not receiving right now.
All right, it is your time. And before we start the Q and A, I wanted to go back to Greg's comment about leadership. Elected, appointed, and otherwise, we waited for elected officials to show up. We waited for candidates to show up. And so now I get to introduce one of the candidates in the room for city council because it's the only one that's here. And because I know she cares passionately about education and looks forward to working in the going forward administration. Sally Alcorn, Sally for the City, position five at large. Thank you. Where? No, no, Sally's back here. I'm looking for, where is Donna? Oh, I'm sorry, I did not, now I see you. And our wonderful chair of the State Board of Education, Donna Barak, we should cheer Donna, please. Thank you. Appreciate that, I did not see you, my apologies. All right, question? Give me a minute. All right, I've known Mrs. Provost longer than I've known anybody almost in this room. I saw Mrs. Provost, but I also knew Mrs. Provost had a question. And at the same time that she did a question, I was going to get her to, look, I've been around this longer than most folks, so. All right, just wait a minute. Ms. Provost, would you introduce yourself when you ask your question? Okay. All right, and the mics are coming around, so just raise your hand, the mic will be brought to you. Ms. Provost, the mic will be brought to you in a moment, and we'll do that. Okay, everybody clear where we headed? Q and A of the panel, Sharon, would you join us here at the chair here for you? Sharon, would you join us at the table? Okay, you're on.
Thank you, Larry. Hi, I'm Sarah Spear Selber. And I have a question, when we talk about early childhood education, leadership, et cetera, and certainly education. I'm curious, how many kids in our schools today, every single year after three years of age, have an eye screening and a hearing screening? Since the state of Texas put a cap on all special needs children, we are living in a state where right now, the state of Texas owes $3.3 billion in back pay for kids who learn differently. Kids with mental health issues, kids with special learning needs. Not one person has addressed the way our children learn. We just keep talking about broken systems. And so when we talk about leadership, how many people get elected by taking campaign contributions? And how are we following those campaign contributions to the people who are making decisions about all of our children and the way they learn?
I think that there was additional dollars put into the system for ECI. Is that what you're talking about?
Those are some of the common disabilities that Sarah spoke about. But what are those needs when we have the learning disabilities, delayed response, those kids who have short-term memory? And they, I guess you want to say they all come with poverty? Or what we're feeding them? We live out on the east side, so we see a lot of these. I work at a school now where my population is 87% economically disadvantaged. We have a chemical plant that's across the street that's behind on their taxes. That actually had an explosion that closed our schools down. What do we do?
Okay, well, anybody can go on this, but this is prompted by something that Greg said. You mentioned Worthing High School. Worthing High School has 92% of students who are labeled at risk. As opposed to a school in the same attendance boundary, Kip Sunnyside has 37% labeled at risk. Dr. Abraham mentioned that there are three different government agencies paving the same street. In Texas, we seem to have two different systems for funding public schools, the traditional schools and the charter schools. So I wanted to ask, where do charter schools fit in the picture of post-Brown segregation?
I'll start with a small response and then hand it over to the experts. So my consultant, again, on education matters. Okay. Is this better? Okay, so she was saying that charter schools are actually also part of the system at this point? And that, yes, some are better than others, but we should also consider them also part of the same relative structure because they are reporting and they're making money based on their ability to show performance with regards to testing. And so that's my small response to that. I asked her, so then what? Then what? What do we do? What are you talking about? Are you talking about more money? Are you talking about, you know, doing away with charter and then just moving all to vouchers? She said, no, you don't, you don't, you know, it would be absurd to pour boiling water in a cup that's broken, was her response. And I told our recorder on that, although she then asked me not to give her name. So in her mind, really, it's the sum total of all of the functions within the communities. Because if we can't, as Maslow says, if we can't address the physical and fundamental needs that we all have, then none of us can aspire to even more. The first level is those physical needs and then safety. And these are considered those physiological needs. After you have those met, and this goes for all of us as well, after we have those, especially for those people that were affected by the flood recently, after you have those met, then you can think about contributing to the community. After that, you're going to look for recognition that you're doing something. You know, how many of us get recognized? Only after that can you aspire for more. And so the question that we should be asking ourselves in this city is, are we being all that we can be? It's a societal issue, it's the communities, is my response.
Okay. Somewhat towards Mandy, because she was talking about the $6 billion that was being given to our schools. But anyone can answer. How do the lower socio-economic communities gain the time to invest in their own children's school when you have either both parents or one parent in the household working two jobs just to survive? Is there any talk about taking some of that $6 billion to provide daycare for these lower socio-economic communities to invest time in the children? As well as give the parents some financial reprieve to be able to get more involved with their own child's academic life?
That is a great question and a topic that I know that many people are struggling with, particularly the school districts. When we talk about parent education and parent engagement, so I have to point to Edith because she works with schools all over, really trying to gain, to engage them. But how do you when they're not available, right? And so I know that school districts are looking on the weekends. Or what does parent education engagement look like? Does it mean that they have to come to the school? Or are you able to go to them to where they are? We have to think outside of the box and not just traditionally how it used to be. But I also know in regards to childcare, schools are looking at public-private partnerships, right? And that has to do with earlier education. So particularly with pre-K, if it's half a day, can they engage those community resources and partners? But I know that school districts are also coming up with family engagement and family education plans. It's actually required now. And so it's been a couple of years to try to do a better job.
I'd like to chime in on the engagement of parents because my thesis was actually around engaging parents. I was trying to figure out why kids were failing school. And the simple, very complicated answer is because their parents were allowing them to. But that's a very complicated answer. And I don't have a whole, I don't have time to go into the all of it, but you can get my book and it'll give it to you. But quickly, parents are engaged. They are engaged as far as they believe they should be. And so when schools say that parents are not engaged, it's because schools have a very specific idea of what engagement looks like. That is not the same idea that parents have. And that is a process that has happened over the last 65 years of how school has socialized parents to engage in school.
Dr. Payne, can I just add a small? Every time a school fails their testing and they're under scrutiny by the state, they actually have to come up with a plan as to how they're going to do better. And part of that plan, if you read, in fact, all of the plans for the schools that are failing, it says we will do more with community engagement. But the community is pretty much the sum total of the students. So you're actually looking at a community that doesn't have time to help the school to do better.
Yes, my name is Georgia Provost. And I started off as a homeschool community agent with HISD. Beautiful program because we had to go and see why the child wasn't coming to school, why they wasn't passing the grade, and get resources for them, get mentoring. And then I taught school at E.O. Smith. That's when we had a dynamite superintendent, and his name is Billy Reagan, and he's sitting in the room right now. And y'all can talk all this noise about education, what you talking about? But what's on the table right now is education and economics. And it's criminal the way HISD has done my black and brown schools. First, let's start with integration. What did you all do? You take all the professional experienced black teachers out of my black schools and send them to the white schools. You too young to remember that, young man. Okay, you mentioned Jones High School. We had the vanguard school at Jones High School. Y'all move that out of there. Now explain to me how you take a high school like Jack Yates High School and send a principal that has never been a principal of a high school. You all are destroying my schools. And you talk about leadership? We need leadership. And the people that you got on HISD? Yeah, they went to elementary, middle, high school, maybe a few colleges, but they don't know the nuts and bolts about education. And then you get teachers in my school that need to know to learn the tradition and the custom of these black and brown students. And then go look at the environment. Black kids, Mexican kids, Hispanic kids can learn. When I was teaching school that made 50, I didn't put a minus 50, I put a plus 50. And then I gave them the resources how they can go get to 50. When you show a black and brown child, you love him and you got some love for him, they're making Cs and Ds, I guarantee you they make As and Bs. So y'all need to change your attitude. And I'm a candidate running for city council at large, position one. Everybody that live in Houston can vote for me.
Yes, I just want to say that my name is Alvin O'Chambliss Jr. And I've been in this room all night. And I've heard a lot, and I just want to say two things. First of all, I'm the foremost authority in the country on desegregation. My case is the leading case right now, Harvard and all the rest of them, in terms of admission. Udonna States and Ayers versus Fordice, 505, US 717, 1992. But I've been involved in desegregation litigation, the lost case on the Fifth Circuit, January the 8th, 2000, I mean, whatever, 2019. My client didn't want to do cert, but what I'm saying is this, desegregation is the hook that the court used to equalize. Brown was an admission case. It was about admissions. And they've turned it around. Right now, the state of Maryland, the name of the case is the Coalition for Equity versus Maryland. That case is going up to the US Supreme, at the Fourth Circuit. And that's Morgan State. And then as opposed to trying to do a desegregation case, which you deal with all aspects of a college, they went in on unlawful duplication, they went in on employment and program. And of course, the court went along with them. But when they get to the Supreme Court, they're going to lose because... But when they get to the Supreme Court, they're going to lose because trace, the thing about Brown, let me just, 14th Amendment, one thing, but they got to understand this. The problem with law right now, 14th Amendment, you have to prove discrimination. Well, under Brown, the question is traceability. On May 17th, 1954, how many states had segregated school systems? You had the 13, 11 states of the Confederacy, plus the 13, and the four border states, and Pennsylvania and Ohio. So it was 19 states and the District of Columbia. The litigation we was involved in is Adams versus Richardson. But what I'm basically saying is that desegregation is not, it's the only empowerment tool. Had it not been for us, all the black colleges would be closed. Desegregation, that is the hook. And so to come in here and talk about Brown, to me, it's like me some years ago. No, no, I just want to say, one thing. I was the guy, ooh, Corolla Scott King. And the point is, I hate that, but I did because I was young. I'm 75 years old. I've been on the ballot.
And he will be here after this to continue the dialogue if anybody wants to talk to him. Because he's right. He's been on this issue for years and years and years. All right, I got to end this. I'm sorry to, Noah, we're going to have to, we got to go, man. Quickly, okay, quickly, Noah, come on. And then I have to go, and now come to you two.
Are you all interested? Open. If people have follow-up questions to contact you all and continue the dialogue. Okay.
So my, it's a two-part question. So first is Mandy, who had spoken earlier on the reasons for success in certain, I would say, low-income neighborhoods. One of the anomalies which I found was not mentioned, and I'd like to question that, is what about the schools where they bring in a mix of population, both in terms of income levels as well as races? How does that impact, you know, those neighborhoods? How well they do? And the second thing is, I live in a neighborhood where I'm two minutes from a school, but none of the kids from my neighborhood go to that school. All the kids are busting, and they're all the same kind. So to me, this is truly segregation as it exists today within HISD. So what are we doing about that?
I don't want to disappoint you. I would want to connect you with our data team on what's going on. But from the conversations that I've had with people, peer-to-peer learning is extremely beneficial, right? And diversity is really important and that is working. But as far as the data and what is the key, I'd like to connect you with our data team. I'm sorry.
Okay.
There are performance, they're on the academic level, an integrated school shows better performance of black and brown schools on like health, on health outcomes, shows better health outcomes, college enrollment, there's like a whole list. And I actually have a report that compiles them that I can share with you, too.
One more. Natasha Butler, an award member from ALIF, ALIF Board of Trustees, is here. Where is she? Sorry, I didn't get to, and thank you for the reminder because you see from up here but you don't see. All right, to close us out, and those of you who stayed are in for a real treat, to close us out is none other than our good friend, Chris Tomlinson. Chris talks about every day in his work that he does with the Chronicle, the challenges of a growing multicultural, multi-ethnic society and the economy. Because at the end of the day, it all comes back to the economy. Chris Tomlinson has written commentary on business, energy, and economics for the Houston Chronicle since 2014. Before joining the Chronicle, he spent 20 years with Associated Press, reporting on politics, conflicts, and economics from more than 30 countries in Africa, the Middle East, and Europe. He is also the author of a New York Times bestselling book called Tomlinson's Hill, which is about his half-white and half-black family. He's also produced the award-winning documentary film by the same name. Both examine the history and consequences of race, politics, and economics in Texas. Our good friend, Chris Tomlinson.
Okay, so I know I'm standing in the way of you heading out to the car, so I'll keep it quick. Wore my Carhartt Air Force Ones tonight because I think it's an interesting coalition of Nike bringing together two cultures. You know, Larry asked me to sum things up, and I did notice some common themes in the discussion tonight. You know, we started with Dr. Washington talking about, you know, how equality is not integration, integration is not equality, and that in many ways, forced integration just led to greater segregation. Because ultimately, who we identify ourselves as being within our community, that comes from the heart and the mind. It doesn't come from the justice system, or it can't be forced onto us by a judicial ruling or a legislative body. We also heard how the lowering of formal segregation based on race opened the door to greater segregation based on income, class, and education. Then Fran came up and talked to us a little bit about the history of Brown and this idea of mutuality. And she talked about whether or not desegregation was the Underground Railroad to equality. But, you know, as I said, justice and equity, they must come from the community, not from some power on high. Stephen gave us some great statistics about, you know, a third of black 4th graders not at reading level, while three-quarters of white 4th graders are. But he also questions, you know, is the problem really race? Is it really segregation, or is it something more? Is it something, is it poverty? Is it class? Is it hunger? Is it parental involvement? You know? And ultimately, is the answer to move people to different zip codes, or is it to raise up the quality of life in every zip code? You know, speaking Stephen, you know, his observations kind of echoed Sharon's, talking about the importance of community. Sorry, I should have taken shorthand in college, and I didn't. So I have to work out my chicken scratch. David also, you know, he was talking to us about, again, community, building complete communities. And, you know, is it, you know, how long does this implicit bias stay with us? You know, I mean, it's, and this is something I kind of thought about in my book, was that, you know, my father was a Klansman, my great-grandfather, my grandfather, my great-grandfather was a Klansman, my great-great-grandfather was a slaveholder, you know? And through my family's history, we've seen that implicit bias go away. And as a community, you know, what can we expect? And at what point can we see, kind of reap the benefits of that, of the end of that? You know, and part of that is overcoming the historic segregation in housing and in You know, and he also, you know, and he and other members of the board said, you know, came to us and said, was Brown v. Board of Education a bait and switch? Was it a, did it give with one hand while taking away with the other? Mandy talks to us about, again, people and politicians talk about change, but in fact, they do very little. And we have to look at ourselves as being part of that. We talk, every single one of us may talk a lot about change, but what do we actually do to get up in the morning and make a difference? You know, this, you know, the legislature, I covered the legislature for six years, it is a game. You know, they take one year, they give back the next, and then they claim like they're God's gift. And that's what they've done yet again. And it all comes down to short-termism. You know, if you look at our legislature, they did give money, more money for education, but they gave more money back in tax breaks. You know, but there is no silver bullet for helping the working poor. You know, we talk about childcare deserts, food care deserts, talk about gentrification. We talk about barriers to housing. You know, if Board v. Brown v. Board of Education taught us anything, is it that just another judge's written ruling, is that really going to make a difference? You know, Gregory told us about just the real emotional distress of people who feel forgotten. And when I was working in, you know, I've had the privilege of working all over the world, and whether it's in a poor African-American rural community in East Texas, or whether it's in a refugee camp in Congo, I can tell you that when you see someone who has lost hope, who feels isolated, who feels given up upon, they stop caring for themselves. And in the most dangerous moments, they turn their anger upon others. Social isolation is destructive and a life and death matter. And that's why Greg calls for radical kinship, to walk next to each other, to be involved with each other. And that's when I look around the room and I'm asking each one of us, how often do we go do that? How often do we actually go out and practice that radical kinship? You know, I recently did a book reading in the Houston County Jail to sex offenders. And I say that not to like point out that I'm so proud of myself, but to tell you how weird and terrifying and awkward that was for someone like myself who, you know, my brand is to be, you know, friend of everyone. But when you actually go out and you start talking to the most isolated, the most marginalized, you know, it's an exercise, and it's something you have to do and experience, and it's a lot tougher than you think, which is why I understand why you don't do it, or why most people don't do it, and why we should. And then Larry asked us to think, in the end, about the role of leadership and what we expect from our leaders. Because as someone who's been on the battlefield with armies, I can tell you, leadership does matter. I have seen units that were absolutely honorable and did everything right because they had a great leader who took that job seriously and set an example. And I've seen war crimes committed by our troops in the field because their officers didn't care, or they took shortcuts. Leadership matters more than anyone really appreciates, and we have to take that seriously. And Mandy tells us that we have lessons, we have learned them, we've done the studies, we have a lot of smart people, it's just the question of implementing them. And this comes back, you know, to David saying, we need to own the inequities of our community. We need to understand that we are our brother's keeper and to look around us and see that things are different, and that injustice to one is an injustice to all. You know, it's, Steve's data tells us, it's predictable, folks, it's statistics, it's math. We know if we keep doing things the way we've always done them, that things will remain the same or get worse. It's not really that difficult to figure out, we can do something. And it all comes down to Fran Victoria's beseeching us to be more civil and to respect each other and identify mutuality. I would go a little further and say that Brown was a reminder of asking us, how do we define our community? How do we, is it just, is it just, you know, other white folks? Is it just other Jews? Is it just other Christians? Is it other Muslims? Is it us, America against the world? I mean, it's, there are so many ways we can define our community. And Board v. and Brown v. Board was testing that question. Because honestly, we had hedged our bets against the radical promise of the U.S. ideal, which is that we are not a nation of blood and soil. We are not a nation of pigment and ancestry. We are a nation of ideas and merit, and that's what we should achieve, that's what we should strive for, is that it's not about what we look at, look like, but about what we do. And if I can add that, based on my research, I know the destruction that desegregation did to this country, but I'm also aware of the benefits of it. We do know from science that people who went to diverse schools are the least racist that have ever been observed by social scientists. You know, and, you know, it's, and it was interesting to hear Sharon talking about Dallas because we were in Dallas at the same time, and we were going to schools at the same time. We were desegregated at the same time. And when you got on a bus to come north, I, we met in the middle, I imagine. And I would love to compare notes later to figure out whether or not we were ever at the same schools. Because I remember this very distinctly. It's a big part of shaped, it's a big part of what shaped who I am as a writer, and it has certainly shaped Sharon as someone who she is. But I do think it's a testament to the experiment of desegregation and integration that we're both on this stage before you today, arguing that more must be done. Thank you all so much for coming, and please, a round of applause for the panel.
There's two quick things before I call on the rabbi to close us out here. There's been a few references made to everybody's kind of surprise that I'm here this evening. And I just want to say thank you for the 20 people in this room who I don't have to send thank you cards to. My friends, I had colon cancer surgery a couple of weeks ago, and I'll start chemo in another couple of weeks. So the odds of me being here tonight were, kind of rolled the dice, 50/50. But I'm here, and I got to thank one person in particular for allowing me and getting me and helping me here, and that's my wife, Regina. Thank you, dear. Two quick things. That handsome young guy standing against the wall back there who looks a little bit like me is my younger brother, Melvin. He has a basket in his hand that if you want to be part of an ongoing dialogue that we're going to form after this evening, please give him your business card or a piece of paper with your name, address, and name, email address, and phone number, and we're going to get back in touch with you. Let me close with this wonderful poem because I think it sets the tone for where we're going forward in the future, and then I'll turn it over to Rabbi Hayan. The title of the poem is entitled, "Show Your Soul." Show your soul. One of the most calming and powerful actions you can do to intervene in a stormy world is to stand up and show your soul. Soul on deck shines like gold in dark times. The light of the soul throws sparks, can send up flares, build signal fires, cause proper matters to catch fire. To display the lantern of soul in shadowy times like these, to be fierce and to show mercy toward others, both are acts of immense bravery and of greatest necessity. It is time we, as Houstonians, show our soul around these issues. Stand up, be in charge, take charge, make the change happen that you want to see, be part of what we need to do to set this right for all children, for the sake of our common humanity, for the sake of civility going forward. Thank you for being here, Rabbi.
My thanks on behalf of this congregation, Larry, to you for your leadership, for the producing and incubating this idea to our distinguished erudite, experienced, very wise panelists for bringing their perspective, Chris, for you for offering your thoughts as well. Just to bookend the way that Dr. Washington began us this morning, this evening, with her description of a school kid begging not to have to show up because she was scared or distressed or anxious, I just want to offer my thanks to all of you for having shown up, and my thanks in advance for continuing to do so. Thanks for being here tonight. Drive safe going home. We'll see you the next time we talk.